Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting from Monday, October 7th, 2024. Let the meeting reflect beginning at 6:30. We'd like to make note that we have all members of the council present with the exception of Councilor Berman, who has been excused this evening, and City Administrator Bohenko. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under thy indivisible, with liberty and justice for law.
Thank you. And next item this evening, under Item 4, and that is Committee Correspondence to Council. Any members of the council wishing to speak? Councilor Hewitt?
As liaison to the Dyer Library, I want to mention Ballot Question 3, an act to authorize a general fund bond issued to restore historic community buildings. It's a $10,000 bond issued to restore historic buildings owned by government and nonprofit organizations, with funds being issued contingent on a 25% local match requirement from either private or nonprofit resources. Funding from this could help nonprofit organizations like our own Dyer Library. If you have more questions about Question 3, go to main.gov, General Election Ballot Referendum Questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Archer?
Yes, as the liaison to the chamber, the chamber is holding its 10 talks. It will be the second annual. It is this Wednesday at the Bitterford Theater, the Bitterford City Theater, at, I believe, 6:30 this Wednesday.
Thank you. Okay, not seeing anyone else. Moving on to Item 5 this evening. There is no general comments. Item number 6, we do have public comment. There is no one signed up, but if there is any member of the public wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to address council.
Tonight, I want to share gratitude for the one-year anniversary this week of City Administrator Mr. Bohenko. In my civic years, you have been a breath of fresh air. Thank you for your critical and creative thinking and for your leadership. Thank you. As well as my gratitude towards this 10-month administration of the mayor and this city council. Over the past year, I have heard some of you say, which I paraphrase, "It takes time." I somewhat disagree with that statement. This administration has addressed many initiatives, addressed many outstanding issues, and have already addressed some of the citizens' filed pending grievances. You have accomplished much in 10 months, and I, after 10 years of following the city hall, I congratulate you. I appreciate what I have experienced this last 10 months and a year with Mr. Bohenko. I thank you for your continued service and listening. I personally have witnessed the revitalization within all of you, and I'm looking forward to continued progress and resolutions. And now, my gratitude extends to the city and state officials for the new flashing stop signs at the intersection of Bradley Street and Spring Street. It is much needed and much overdue. Thank you. It is as a temporary short-term safety improvement. I personally thank MDOT for providing the signs and the equipment, and Pat Fox Public Works team, who installed them last week. I personally was there when I saw them putting in one with the solar panel. I looked at those men, and I saw them as a work of a servant from the heart. I think they knew what they were doing, and they appreciated it, especially since we had a recent death there. Thank you to the Department of Public Works. And lastly, I am looking forward to MDOT's continued design revisions of that intersection of the raised intersection project and its funding for the 2026-2027 construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. If there's any other member of the public wishing to speak, please step forward.
Hi, good evening. I'm Inga Brown. I live at 161 Simpson Road. I also wanted just to say how fortunate I think we are for the improvements at the Spring Street and Bradley Street intersection. I drive that way every single morning. I come into town the back way on Route 5, and I come to that intersection. And I think these small improvements that we're making are so important, and I think everyone is really noticing them. And I think the movement to creating a safer Saco is an incremental thing. I know it's very expensive. I did just want to point out, perhaps you know as well, in Bitterford on May Street, which is sort of a cut-through street if you're coming back from 111, that street has some of the most impressive traffic calming that I have seen. There are now three or four islands, much more prominent crosswalks. As a driver, I probably sped through that street as well on my way previously, but I am so delighted to have to slow down, to acknowledge this is a neighborhood, and I think that those are some models that we can also look at. So I'm just impressed with small improvements have really big impacts. So, thank you.
Thank you, Inga. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to Item 7 tonight, that is action items. There is one item, and that is Item A, which is one reading of the Tri-Community Camera Inspection Agreement. And at the last minute, Councilor Gunn did volunteer to take this as the resource. It is not listed in the packet. So, Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The communities of Saco, Bitterford, and Old Orchard Beach have had a longstanding agreement to share utility inspection, equipment, and personnel across the three communities. The attached agreement would extend this collaboration for a term of three years. I move to approve the agreement for a tri-community camera inspection and asset management program between the town of Old Orchard Beach, City of Saco, and City of Bitterford, and further move to authorize the city administrator to enter into the agreement.
Motion has been made by Councilor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion on the item? Councilor Hatch, then Councilor Johnston?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I had a few questions that I submitted this afternoon to City Administrator Bohenko, and I just wanted to bring those up. I think they've been clarified. I don't know if John wants to handle the answers to the -- okay. Yeah, we went through a couple of things, looking at this agreement. One of them was the Article 3, I'm sorry, 3, references in Appendix A that has to do with a job description. It's my understanding there is one, and it will be attached to this agreement if it gets approved tonight.
Yep. It's a -- we do have one through Hainan Resources. If anybody wants a copy of it, we certainly can get it for them, but it will be attached.
Okay. That's fine with me. I'm sure it's been vetted professionally, and we're good with that. We also, I asked for a language change in Clause Number 4. The very last phrase says, "As designed by all the directors," I thought was a little vague, so I asked that the Public Works Director's descriptor be put in there for clarity, and I understand that that will be done as well.
We'll do that. I think it just got left out.
I think you're right. And then, I had just some general questions. There's a lot of requirements here for billing and collections, and those, you know, are resolved. I just, I wanted to ask if the, during the last contract period, if any of those payments that were due were not made, and I'll defer to you for that.
Okay. Why I chuckle a little bit is, back in fiscal year '21, the city council cut the, that budget, and so instead of being able to provide the required $5,600 into the capital, we only were able to provide $4,100 in. So what we did in future years is, I know that Councilor Hatch brought it to my attention, we put more money in the budget for catch-up. So we did $7,000, and this year will be the last year we'll end up going back to the $5,600.
Okay, great.
But we were doing catch-up as a result of that cut. With regards to payments from other communities, all payments are up to date, and I just want to give, the current balance in the capital account is $104,674.
Great.
I believe that is all the questions that you had. I try to, I think that's it.
You hit them all, and I appreciate that. And I think it's important for us as we, as a council, approve these ongoing agreements, that we be a little cautious of just taking last year's agreement and bringing it forward without exercising some due diligence. So I appreciate all that effort. I'm sure you had the staff scurrying around a little bit this afternoon, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I want to thank Travis for putting it together.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I have a comment and then a couple of questions that may overlap with Councilor Hatch's. Just comment-wise, I know that, you know, the agreement has been in place since the late 1990s, but I couldn't personally recall during my time, so over a decade, council having approved or re-approved this agreement. Now, maybe it was in a consent agenda, and I missed it, but I went back through all my agendas, and I couldn't find it on the agenda. And so I dug a little deeper and found that what I could find was the last approved agreement was in 2011, 13 years ago, and that OOB council renewed their end of the agreement in 2016. And I don't point this out, you know, place blame with anybody. I just think it's an important part of, you know, our role as counselors and staff's roles. And as I've consistently said, you know, I care about that historical record and, you know, that council-staff relationship. So, again, just, I don't know. Like I said, maybe we have done it, but it's certainly, prior agreements for five years, this one is three years, which I'm fine with. I think that maybe narrowing it down, making it less timely, might actually improve because we've got, you know, new individuals councils turn over. So, again, I just, I'm just curious, not just this, but we have other agreements that come to mind. How are those things tracked? And I don't need an answer now, I'm just curious. How do we, is there software out there that we can make available that would, you know, ping when council needs to approve something? Because I wouldn't say it's common, but it certainly has become more prevalent in years as staff has turned over, and I'm just concerned about that. I won't be here forever, and my memory only goes so long at this point with some of the things that I'm digging back into to remember, but I do not recall, you know, agreeing to this previously. So, as far as questions, I just need a little more clarity on this breakdown. So, as I understand it, it's a full-time City of Saco employee works for the City of Saco, and do we bill the partner communities by the hour? So where does the 40-40-20 split come in, into play?
That, I'll let Travis come up and answer that. And I kind of know what it is, but let Travis specifically get to that.
Good evening. So what we do with a 20-40-40 split is we break down his wages, his hourly wages, any overtime, the van maintenance, fuel, the camera equipment that we have to repair, and any other items that we have to purchase for the van. If he needs a set of wrenches, that gets broken, broken down into that 20-40-40 split. And then, anything above and beyond, like a, we just purchased a new computer for the van. So we got together as a group. We get together in the minimum yearly, sometimes, you know, more if we need to discuss certain things. And like, we took that PC out of the capital. So the larger one-time purchases for, you know, capital improvements. We just sent the van out two years ago to be the undercoat, sandblasted and painted. That come out of the capital. So, we get together as a group and discuss, do we want to do the 20-40-40 split, or do we want to take that from the capital?
So, and I think I understand that, but the salary or the pay for that employee doesn't break down annually 40-40-20. It's, some years it could be heavy on Bitterford's side, other years it could be heavy on OOB or Saco?
Yep. So we do a schedule every year. It's not always exactly, you know, that 20-40-40, but those days we track, because sometimes Bitterford, you know, he might be scheduled to be in Saco. Bitterford has an emergency. He goes over there for three days that, you know, should have been our days. Well, you know, we keep track of that throughout the year, and it pretty much balances out. And then, those days that he works there, we keep track of that and bill to the right community, and we bill quarterly.
Okay. So, yeah, like, all right. That's available in a report somewhere.
Yeah, I have them right here.
I'm just curious. I mean, it sounds, I've never heard it not working good, but I'm always curious about, you know, is it performing as anticipated, or are we the ones housing an employee and other surrounding communities are really using them more?
Yeah. If anybody wants to look at them, I have them here, quarterly reports, billing.
And then, just lastly, goes back to that capital account, the annual payments that we fund. Do we feel those are appropriate still? Because when I went to the 2016 agreement, those were the same figures, and I just figured inflation-wise.
Well, I think right now, we have $104,000 in that account, and I think it's appropriate right now. If we feel, if, you know, at the end of the day, if we end up needing to do something more in that, I don't know how the equipment is holding up, but I suspect it's still good. But at this, what this does is allow us to pull away money for the time that we have to replace the equipment. And like I said, we have $104,000 sitting there right now. And I expect that if, you know, if let's say something happened, and we had to replace all the equipment, and it came up to $150,000, we'd figure out a way to share, you know?
Right. Like I said, I don't know anything about the equipment, but the vehicle itself has to be significant. Is that in that line, or is that in our fleet?
We, go ahead, Travis.
I'd say that's, that's in this, this capital.
It would be paid for from this?
Yep. Yep. The City of Saco holds a lien on that vehicle right now, but it's still split ownership between, between the communities. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you. Okay, not seeing any additional questions or comments. We'll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay, that now takes us to Item 8 this evening, and that's new business. One item this evening, and that is an amendment to the fiscal year 2025 approved budget for the Ask Foundation, which is the Aid Saco Kids. We are bringing this back right now as new business. This was brought to us at the beginning of the summer. We have assigned, Councilor Hewitt, if you're okay being the council resource?
Certainly. Okay. I would like to put forward an amendment to the approved budget that adds $5,000 to the Ask Foundation. Ask is Aid for Saco Kids in the supported entities' budget allocation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments or need an update regarding the program? Councilor Bohenko?
What I, you know, Councilor Hewitt had brought it up a few months ago. We did discuss it with the joint meeting with the city council and the school board. Everybody seemed to be on board with it. You do have a breakdown of what already has been spent from it. I did an attachment. So I think it's, we're just closing the loop on this from a few months ago.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Councilor Hewitt?
I just want to let anybody out there know, the funds are used for things like equipment for students who want to participate in sports, winter clothing to allow students to go outside for recess. As a tech that's been at the schools, you know, you don't want to see a child out there shivering. It does happen. Kids come to school with holes in their shoes, or, you know, there's a lot of families that might have a need here, and it helps out in those kinds of situations. Other things are backpack programs for kids over the weekend. We're fortunate. We have school breakfast and school lunch for anybody who needs it. But if a kid goes home and doesn't have a lot of food over the weekends, this is really important. There's emergency rental assistance. There's been cases where there's fires in town, and families need a place to live. We need to meet kids' needs, you know, they need housing, they need food before they'll be able to learn. So, we're setting them out for success. It also provides heating and electricity support, and any other support if families are seeing homelessness or other situations.
Thank you. Councilor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to bring up, I'm for this. The fact that it's Saco-centric, I'm more comfortable with. I'm not comfortable with the precedence that this will set, is that any nonprofit entity could ask throughout the whole year. We have a process. It starts with the request being submitted to our city administrator by February, if I remember correct. Again, that's the norm. This is Saco-centric, so I'm actually going to probably, I'm liking what I'm seeing. However, I can be contested that it's really breaking the process that we have and how our budget works. The fact that it's Saco-centric is fine, but now I'm worried about random nonprofit asking for 10 grand here and there throughout the year. When we get a budget, we look at the budget and the supported entities in totality at that time. When we get a budget, we look at the budget and the supported entities in totality at that time. This is a small amount. I'm considering this a one-off myself. So I'm okay with this being presented, but it does set us up for future debates, conversations for any other nonprofit with a good cause that comes forward. But I was aware of this, so that helps that. And that it is kind of a, like I said, it's Saco-centric. I'm more in alignment with.
City Administrator?
Yes, I think that's a good point, Counselor. As you recall, Counselor Hewitt brought it forward as an informational item back, probably during, I think the budget process was well underway. And we wanted to talk to the school board about it, and we did, and Jeremy came in, and that was at the beginning of the summer. So, you know, at that point, I think everybody was in favor. If you look at the attached sheet, there's a substantial amount of money that comes from private, you know, donations and the like. So I do agree with you. I think we should have to be careful about this, but this certainly is something that we wanted to present to the council and move forward on, and, and we will advise them that they need to get their request in as any other entity would get their request in. But I think you're absolutely right. Yeah, we have to be careful about that.
Going forward, they will be required under the normal supported entity process. Okay, anyone else? Okay, this will be brought back at the next meeting. Yep, next meeting.
October 21st.
Okay, that takes us to item nine, and that is an administrative update this evening. City Administrator Behanko?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the first comment has already been covered by Kelly Archer, which explains the safety improvements at Spring Street and Bradley Street intersections. We have that in my report written. There is also a Factory Island walking tour. City historian Peter Skontras will lead an informative walking tour of Factory Island on October 26th at 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM. Learn about the island's beginnings, original drivers of the industry and precedent-setting 1841 mill worker strike when almost 500 female factory workers walked out of Saco's York Manufacturing Company. Peter's knowledge, energy and passion will enlighten and thought-provoking and entertaining. Space is limited, so you can sign up on our website. If you recall, last year, there was an incident where we had to lock down for an academy and other schools throughout the city. And at that time, there was a concern that there was no specific way to alert people as to what was going on. Subsequent to that, and after talking to the mayor and other council members, we did some research and we have come up with what is known as Code Red. I use this in another community. And what it is, is the City of Saco will be launching a new emergency notification system. It's called Code Red to provide real-time alerts during emergencies such as public safety concerns or severe weather notifications. The system allows public officials to send urgent messages to specific areas or the entire city. So we don't, we're not just locked into sending it to one part of this, to all, the whole city. We can actually put it into different parts of the city. Residents are encouraged to register at sacomaine.org/emergencyalerts to receive alerts via text, email, mobile app or phone. While a pre-existing phone database is included, registration is required to ensure accurate contact information. Police Chief Jack Clements urges all residents and businesses to enroll, noting that they rely on, that they don't want to miss these alerts. The Communications Department will be assisting the public safety departments with enrolling at upcoming events digitally and by working with local organizations to promote enrollment. You'll see a press release on this going out pretty soon. I encourage people to sign up. I think it will be an excellent tool for us as city employees to provide information in a timely manner to our residents. So I think this was a good program to put forward. So we're moving in that direction. Saco Main Street 2024 Pumpkin Harvest Festival. The festival include decorated pumpkins, a pie eating contest, local vendors, live performances and more. The festival will take place on Main Street in downtown Saco on Saturday, October 19th, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, with a rain date of October 26th. Also, upcoming holiday, just a reminder, the city hall will be closed Monday, October 14th, in observance of Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we do have some listing of things that are coming up on the agenda. So I will be more than happy to answer any questions that city councillors may have on any item that I've talked about tonight.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? And I did just get myself signed up for the alert the other day. It's actually great because one household member, you can add all members of your household into one account. Okay, now moving on to item 10, that is council discussion and comment. Any councils wishing to speak? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, just quickly, so as I indicated earlier, when we were discussing the tri-community agreement, other agreements came to mind, and one that came quickly to mind was just mutual aid agreements. And I realize that I recognize we have several of them, but I don't actually officially know how many communities we have mutual aid agreement. I'm talking fire department EMS response with. And so I guess I'm just kind of looking for, as time permits, a report on, should those updates be, you know, reexamined? Are they functioning? Are they working well for everybody? And, you know, I'd like personally to see, just for the data, to see, you know, the response, a response report. Like how many times Saco is responding to said community and vice versa. Just have a better understanding of that.
Yeah. I, what I'll do, Counselor, is I'll, I mean, we have, I have brought this up at the department head level. I, I agree with your concerns relative to things getting, I don't want to use lost, but don't get re, well, redone on a timely manner. So, yeah, I agree with you. And so it's, I'm working with department heads on that, but I will, I'll talk to department heads relative to mutual aid agreements or any other type of agreement that they might have.
Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Item 11 this evening, we do have an executive session. Is there a motion to enter into executive session? Counselor Hatch?
Excuse me for getting your attention that way. Thank you, Mayor. Be it ordered that the city council enter into an executive session pursuant to MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6A Personnel Matters.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Parks? We'll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to enter into executive session at 6:58. We will meet in the city administrator's office.
Good evening and welcome back everyone. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second? Second. Second by Councilor Hewitt. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you. Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to exit executive session passes six zero. I'm sorry, now is there a report? Wrong order.
No report again.
Thank you. Okay, that now takes us to item thirteen and that is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Hatch. Second by Councilor Johnston. Roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn at eight nineteen passes six zero and thank you everyone and have a good evening.